Face change is why the Republicans doing that.
That's all I do is pull your strings. He said, I made the motion.
I sit over here. But I don't agree with Mark. And I don't know.
Looked like a bunch of little years out there last night.
I you could I've watched baseball my whole life.
I've never seen it happen in one.
Never seen anything like that in my. I've seen some stuff. How about how about the guy used to be angle on after Judge dropped it? And the guy like straining to get he barely beat the throw. And the one in the hole.
That's a tough one. I mean.
And you know what's weird? I said this to my son because my son's not data. But ever every throw you make as a baseball player on the infield, you're always drifting. So you're never you're never drifting right when you make the throw. And it's the only it's kind of the only one. Second base, you flip it under. Yep. And he just spiked it right in the ground and then. Oh, my gosh, I I had this argument with my son.
I don't even know that he had good footing.
You go to first base until you know you don't.
No, he got lazy because he pointed he started and then he then he pointed up because he thought Rizzo was just gonna keep going.
And then Freddie Freeman, who was that? He had to be.
I didn't I didn't I went to bed after. I don't know how.
When Stanton came up in the game, I thought he's gonna be. He popped out to.
They had their chances, like.
But they did. They have all that. I have never seen anything like that. Then, oh, then they got doubled. I guess that was the big Freeman single and you're like, wow, the guy doubled. That's the most.
Cole was cruise. That's what I just know. Dad, like he and I still think he would have been cruising. First guy got a sink, but they don't single.
And Judge to drop the ball to throw the ball away at third. It's not covered first. Oh, my. Bases loaded two outs. By the way, it would have certainly needed cover. And it wasn't.
I mean, that's that's. Yeah, that's the one that kills. That's the killer.
That's the one he's.
Semi cone.
I mean, sometimes the ball just gets off on you and you walk a long way. Judge got a little lazy when he came, but still. It happens. It looked like it started to slice away from him. It just caught us. When he's any hesitant. On the lake was like.
Morning, good morning. Hi, Kristen.
Oh, we're like you did efforts like you finally.
For everyone and ask you please rise if you're able for the open prayer, pleasure leads before we convene commissioners, public meetings. Dear gracious and loving God, we meet a new day with many thanks and blessings you have bestowed. And father, we witness the vibrant beauty of your creation, exceptional fall we've experienced in our valley. As we look towards another month, we pray that you'll meet the needs of each one through the winter months. We ask you to guide our local state and nation over the next week as we vote for our leaders. And we respect each other's opinions without retaliation or hate. We thank you that we live in a country where we have the freedoms to choose our leaders. We pray that these leaders will not fall on their limited knowledge but seek guidance from you. And they have ears that will listen and address those that are in need. Pray that our leaders will think independently, work together for the common good. Lastly, may we do as you instruct us to do is to pray for our leaders daily. These things we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
The United States of America, due to the Republic of which is sent, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
We will convene commissioners, public meetings this time and ask for approval of this previous meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hey, do we have a public comment on agenda items only at this time? Any online? Nikki, morning.
Presented for your ratification, our invoices due through November fifth twenty twenty four to be paid on October thirtieth, twenty twenty four in the amount of eight hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and five cents.
Any questions on the council? Hey, I have motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side. If I carry it this time, we assess commissioners, public meeting for salary board, convening the salary board this time.
Okay, um, first we have to vote to approve the salary board minutes from the October twenty-four, twenty twenty-four meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Um, and then next we have vote to approve the following salary board actions listed in attachment B. But we're gonna make a slight change to that.
Yes, uh, we need remaining two tip states on there as they're in the process of.
It's the bottom of page one.
We're gonna leave.
Of attachment B.
There'll be two on here.
Yes.
So this brings it down to what ninety?
Pretty close. I think we're at ninety-three. Yeah, it should be about ninety.
Okay. So this is ninety positions that were on the TDA that have been opened or not filled. Uh, the reason why we're voting on to remove them from the TDA is because we're paying assurances on open positions. And basically cleaning cleaning scrubbing TDA uh, to save money. Doesn't mean the positions go away permanently. If a department head or elected official would request one going into twenty twenty-five, they'd come back to the commissioners and ask first through the salary board. And then through the commissioners, request that position. We would entertain it at that time. It makes sense to scrub positions that are open or paying assurances on them that are not filled. And if we were to fill all these open positions, it would it would add up to salary wise, two point eight million dollars, two point eight five million dollars. These positions would all be filled. Obviously, they're not being all filled. They're not a TDA open. Why is it on that TV open? TDA open. And these insurance monies on them because when they ask the overall numbers, that's what they base their insurance rates off of.
Correct.
So.
As well as the retirement side as well.
Yeah, so I want to thank them. Our human resources, uh, financial services, I and her team, the controller's office. We're all working on this to help save some money.
And just to be clear, we're not saving two point eight million dollars. Like, that's what the salaries would be if they were filled. Right. What we're saving is the insurances and the retirements and things like that off. So we're saving a fraction of that. But as they said, we're just wasting it for no reason. So now, starting now, we're no longer wasting it for nobody.
I would like to add that will be continuously looked at.
Yep.
Absolutely. If she wants.
No, I think you guys covered it.
Okay. All right, motion to, uh, move the various positions from the TDA as listed in attachment B.
Yes, I will make that motion.
I'll say.
All fair side.
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This time we'll adjourn the salary board. At this time.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, we're gonna approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. For the prison, Noah Dare, correctional officer, union, twenty dollars per hour, not to exceed one thousand hours annually. This is anticipated start date, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. In resource management, Nicholas Dirt, recycling laborer, pay grade four, fourteen fifty per hour. Eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date, November fourth, twenty twenty-four. And also in resource management, Nolan Loss, recycling labor for pay grade four, fourteen fifty per hour, eighty hours per pay period. Anticipate start date, November fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Hey, can I motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Action.
Five point one, Jason.
Commissioners. Good morning. Commissioners, uh, as usual, we have to post our twenty twenty-five fees, the rate fees. So before you will be the posted rates for the transfer station for this recycling center and the landfill will be effective January one. Any changes and notice will be going out today after the close of business for October statements.
Hey, this will be the first time the landfill fees have been increased since two thousand eight, I believe.
Yes.
So, uh, you know, sixteen years gone, seventeen years. The rates have not been increased, so. Anything else you want to add to it?
I'm good.
Commissioners.
You know, this is another one of the sign of the times that where we're in right now, where inflation's rapid and unfortunately, everybody's costs are going up. Last upgrade landfill has increased dramatically over an eight-year period. And we're just making streamlining, we're making cuts, making changes, we're making it better. This is all just part of it.
Again, it's it's hard anything stays within the same price range for a sixteen-year period. Hey, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
If I can. All fair side.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, five point two through five point four, Kristen.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, the first action under five point two is a subrecipient agreement amendment number three with West Branch Regional Authority. Um, this amendment does two things. One is extend the termination date of the agreement from October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And it also reallocate money within the approved budget. So, um, it's moving some money from the buttonwood sewer maze replacement that is no longer needed into the musty trunk line. So it is not an increase in the amount of their award. It is just, uh, reallocating from two to three.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side.
Hi.
Um, item five point three is the subrecipient agreement amendment number two with Hesel Wolf Township Joint Municipal Authority. Uh, this increases their award from two hundred fifty thousand dollars to four hundred five thousand, five hundred five dollars and sixty-three cents. Um, this is they had a significant increase in the cost of the project due to unforeseen. Um, the other component of this amendment is to extend the termination date from today, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Hey, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Hi.
And action item five point four is a subrecipient agreement with the city of ladies for D B A with for fire departments asking the amount of one hundred nine thousand, three hundred sixty dollars. This is for their emergency response radio system.
Yeah, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Hi.
All right. Kristen, all these, uh, action items, all three of them are for Harper Fund.
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Five point five and five point six.
Morning, Adrian.
Item five point five, I'm requesting that the commissioners approve the agreement with attorney Peter Labacchio to provide counsel to defendants in cases where the public defender's office has a conflict. The hourly rate's ninety dollars, the total of which is not expected to exceed nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And the term of that contract is August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four through the end of twenty twenty-five. And he will be utilized on an as needed basis as our our other conflict attorney.
Okay, thank you. Motion accept.
Just before for public knowledge, and I know I might have asked this before, how what percentage of cases? You know, because we're a small area and because there's only so many law firms, do we have conflict with the?
That would be a better question for the PD's office. So the PD's office contacts the courts when they have a conflict with a specific case. Um, they fill out a form.
Okay, so you don't know the numbers because it doesn't.
No, I I know that the conflict numbers are higher this year than they have been in previous years, but I can't tell you what percentage of the PD's office cases end up being conflicts for them. And the conflict could arise later in the case as well, not initially.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In motion, so.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side.
Item five point six is asking the commissioners to approve an agreement with Donald Martino to represent a specific defendant, Terrence Perez, with regard to his post conviction release act petition, which, um, involved homicide charges. That hourly rate is one hundred dollars and the total of his representation of that defendant for the P C R A petition is not expected to exceed nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Motion accept.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point seven, Mike.
Have a good day, Adrian.
Uh, revisions to county powers.
All right, good morning again. Uh, vote to approve the revisions to the Lycoming County compensation policy. Uh, number four hundred, this one will be four hundred decimal two, an amendment. It, uh, goes off of the cost of living increase to where, uh, you can look at several, the commissioners can look at several factors to determine an amount that aligns with current economic trends, uh, for the cost of living.
And those are employees that are in the pay grade twelve or above.
Pay grade twelve or above supervisor, manager, director, or chief, uh, roles, also looking at budget status, time and grade, years of service, uh, and total overall salary.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Any questions or comments on this compensation practice, policy and procedure?
No, again, I think it's just one of the things of streamlining the county and evaluating, you know, where where the money's being spent. And this is one that will help control, uh, extended increases that have people at a higher rate to begin with.
Uh, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
All fair side.
Hi.
I second.
Hi. If you want to do that again. We're good.
Five point eight, Kelsey.
Good morning, commissioners. Today I have an amendment to the agreement with Loyosok Township for the Reed Street project. It's just a time extension, uh, due to delays from tropical storm Debbie. They weren't able to get in there when they originally would like to.
Motion accept.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
And I'm supposed to pass on word that Lavelle's item was supposed to be on next week's agenda.
So that will be tabled. I wish it tabled.
I will make a motion to table five point nine.
I'll second.
Your side.
Five point ten, Jen.
Action item five point ten, seeking your approval for the amendment, uh, number one for, uh, contract extension, a time, no cost time extension with the R S for the brownfield revolving loan program. The extension until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five is a twenty twenty four budget item.
Yeah, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Your side.
Hi.
Action item five point eleven, seeking your approval for the submission of the fair grant application to P H E H F A in the amount of one million dollars, ninety-five thousand. This is a twenty twenty-four budgeted item. And I will read off the seven projects that are the county's recommended county's recommendations for this year's proposal. American Rescue Workers Rental Assistance Program, Esberry Foundation, Albright Life, Lycoming Rental Assistance Program, Lycoming Clinton Join the Board Housing Program, Step Inc., Supportive Housing Program, Step Inc., Regional Homes In Need Program, and Urgency Home Repair Program, Step Inc., Fast Release Program, and the last one is Y W C A North Central P A Liberty House Program.
Hey, motion accept.
I like the motion.
Second.
All fair side.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day, Molly.
Five point twelve, three, five point sixteen, Mike.
Morning commissioners. The first item I have for you is five point twelve. It's, um, vote to approve resolution twenty four dash twenty-one for a tax minimum anticipation.
Hey, motion accept.
I make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side.
Hi.
Hi.
Next item, five point thirteen, I vote to approve the lease agreement with Salvation Army. This is for the festival of trees and there's a no cost place.
Very last year Salvation Army had their festival of trees down in the old bank area. That's still open, so we've offered that space to them to help them raise revenue and funds, uh, during, uh, Christmas season, and we wish them success and great organization Salvation Army. So I want to thank them and everything they do.
And I think they'll be in there November fifteenth.
Great, thank you. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side.
All right.
Uh, five point fourteen, I'm actually asking to table that. That'll be table indefinitely until we determine a better time.
Okay, motion to table.
I will make a motion to table five point one five.
Five point four, no, five point fourteen.
Oh, okay, sorry. I make a motion to table five point one four.
I'll say.
Your side.
Uh, my bad.
And then five point, um, fifteen, I vote to approve agreement with Johnson's a concrete in the amount of, uh, five hundred dollars. This is for work that's needed at the prison next to that I may see.
Hey, motion accept.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All fair side.
And the last agreement, um, I have for you is a grant application is, uh, for the victim witness service program in the district attorney's office. Application's the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred one dollars. This, um, funds to full-time and one part-time employee. They are a hundred percent under this program of the victim witness service program.
Hey, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
All fair side.
Hi.
Thank you, Maya.
All right, thank you.
Have a good day.
Yeah, you too.
We assess commissioners, public meetings this time for the board of assessments revisions. Being the board of assessment. Revision.
Okay. No, you're fine. No, you're fine.
So this is about two real estate exemptions. One is for the Muncie Lodge two ninety-nine Masonic. And the other is Scottish Rite Cathedral. Since the House Bill thirteen hundred has passed, this is allowing Masonic lodges to file for exemption because if the organization has been operating in Commonwealth for at least a hundred years, and if they also do not have a liquor license, they're they could possibly be exempt, but they must also still pass the HOP test, which is the five-prong test. And those five are it advances a charitable purpose. It donates or renders a substantial portion of its services. It benefits its substantial indefinite class of persons who are legitimate, would sit at wow, I can't speak this morning, subjects of charity. And it also relieves the government of some of its burden and it operates entirely free from private profit motive. The issue here is this is the first time this is happening with the Masonic lodges applying for exemption. It is happening all over in Pennsylvania. The counties I have spoken to, they have denied, they want to let select the courts make the decision because this is the first time this is happening. Um, some counties, one county I know approved it, and the only question was to them was, do you serve liquor? And their board approved it. So I do have Jonathan DeWalt here from Muncie Lodge, and I have Dave Raker here from Scottish Rite. My recommendation is to deny it, but they do have that right to speak to you today about it. They are aware that that's my recommendation and they have thirty days to file with the court of common pleas once the decision order has been rendered. That depends on what your decision is today.
Okay.
So.
Gentlemen, would you like to speak?
Jonathan, would you like to speak?
Morning. I'm John DeWalt, Jr. I'm the secretary at Muncie Lodge number two hundred ninety-nine, both the Masonic Temple Association and for the lodge itself. Um, the House Bill thirteen hundred, when we were made aware of it from the Grand Lodge, they asked us to, uh, put together a packet to submit for the exemption. We do meet, uh, every requirement within the House Bill thirteen hundred and also the five-prong test. Uh, we are an institution of pure public charity. We do that through our contributions, through scholarships, uh, taking care of infirm widows. The the Masonic Temple or the, uh, Masonic villages in Elizabeth Town is also something we contribute to on an annual basis. And we work under the blanket of the Grand Lodge's paternal organization, which this is the oldest paternal organization known in America. And also well as England and Scotland. And it our mantra is to, uh, uh, is charity. I mean, it's truth, charity, and to make good men better. And the way we do that is by, uh, contributing all the funds that does that we do not use for upkeep of our Masonic Hall and our Masonic Lodge go toward charity. Uh, our our widows are taken care of. Uh, we we've handed out five scholarships last year. We and plan on handing out more scholarships in the in the coming years. Our charitable purpose, I mean, is I spelled it out in my application, uh, we're we're operating exclusively to fulfill primary objectives in the application. Uh, and it's set forth, set forth by the constitution of the Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania and other sources of Masonic law. The hall associations that we work on are created to foster the objective of this vehicle to uphold pure public charity. We entire, we operate entirely free from, uh, private profit motive. Uh, none of our earnings or contributions benefit any private individual. Uh, everything that we do, uh, uh, goes revenues and further is in furtherance of the primary objective as described in the application. And, uh, all officers, employees, the applicant or volunteers or receive compensation, including not to include benefits on our case. Uh, we donate a substantial portion of our services. We operate a system of charities, including Masonic Villages, Masonic Children's Home, Pennsylvania, Masonic Youth Foundation, Masonic Library and Museum of Pennsylvania, the Masonic Blood and Organ Donor Program, and the Grand Lodge of Pennsylvania Charity, all of which Muncie Lodge is a subordinate lodge, donates financially to every year. Uh, we benefit a substantial indefinite class of persons who are legitimate subject to charity. We're subject to a group tax determination under five oh one C ten. The Grand Lodge and subordinate lodges have operated under a lodge system for more than one hundred years. And we have not ever been issued a liquor license, nor do we serve liquor on the premises. If there's a social event that takes place, it has to be a licensed bartender to come in. Uh, we relieve the government of some of its burden. Um, we do that through the, you know, performance of our primary objectives. Uh, access to healthcare and residential needs of the elderly, we we donate, uh, people donate things to lodge such as walkers or uh, wheelchairs, you know, any kind of, uh, oxygen equipment. We we make sure that the community has access to that and we give it to them freely. We don't charge anything for that. Um, our leadership skill and development, other training for youth takes place both through our youth organizations and through our interaction with our local communities and the public. Out of, uh, all the members of the lodge, there's only three members of lodge that receive a salary, and that's the treasurer, the secretary, and the Tyler. The Tyler would be the guy who guards the door while the meetings take. Uh, tho- those funds are paid annually, so the. So the treasurer receives a thousand, secretary four thousand, the Tyler two hundred and fifty dollars. All other funds are directed toward the objectives of the lodge, which is pure public charity. Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm Dave Raker.
How are you?
Attorney and member of the Scottish Rite. Um, as Brooke pointed out, this is a new law and this is maybe a case of, a case of first impression here for this board, certainly an early impression. Um, I think that, that law was changed to, to recognize that organizations such as Scottish Rite and the Masonic organization, which of course the Scottish Rite is a Masonic organization, uh, do provide charitable purposes, goals, meet charitable goals and, um, help relieve the government of its burden. Uh, we are a five oh one C ten organization as, as, um, Muncie Lodge. Um, we do provide charitable, um, benefits. Um, we encourage people to worship God at an altar of their own individual choice, religious freedom. They have a hos- a hospitality fund which provides benefits for people in these situations, including members and non-members of our organization. And we provide scholarships. Of course, we provide a meeting hall for our organization. Um, I think, um, pretty clearly we meet all of the five tests. Um, the one that I think should be looked at carefully is, um, I believe we meet it, is the fact that we do rent part of our organization's buildings for various community purposes. Now, I do not think that defeats our application. Because one, the rent is not for purposes of making money or renting. Not to benefit anybody individually, private. We also only pay our secretary and two staff members as Muncie Lodge does. The reason that we need to rent is to keep the organization going. Membership gone down. And, uh, revenues have gone down. And so we rent organization and make money to support our charitable purposes and keep the operation going. Um, I would also note that the, um, charge less for our organization rent buildings than our, uh, competitors. So we're below market value really. And what we do is we rent the Acacia Club, which is Market Street, weddings. Little Theater, also known as the Hard Memorial Cathedral. Weddings and other events and banquet hall and auditorium. The rest of the building is is privately used for our organization now, credit. Um, so, uh, the third point on the fact that we do get some rental income uh, that I believe makes it fit in this law, House Bill thirteen hundred, is that in doing so, we offer this very beautiful building, uh, historic nature to the community, uh, which I think is a benefit for the community for various functions and at weddings and wedding receptions, um, meetings, um, dance and so forth. So I, I think nevertheless, we fit in those intentions that are asked or would grant it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do the Commissioners have any questions for these two gentlemen?
Um, I don't really have any questions. It's a, it's a intriguing um, situation. Uh, obviously the law's been passed for a reason. Um, I listening to what Brooke said, I, pardon me, agrees with what Brooke said that it's so new and the courts are trying to figure this out and, um, and part of me thinks that we should, we should file suit and delay and, and reject it until it gets figured out with the courts. I respect that. I also understand that we're just, we're talking about money. And do they, if they get denied, they have to pay property tax and the property tax comes to the county and the county uses the money for the betterment of the people of our county. If their exemption gets accepted, then they get to keep more money. And then they get to distribute the money charitably to members of our county to make our county a better place. So we're just trying to, it's not like somebody's, nobody's getting rich off this. Nobody, no individual or no business is doing better. It's just how we've got this set of money, this amount of money, how do we best distribute it? Do we distribute it better? Do they continue to distribute it in a way that is, um, that they have been doing to make, um, you know, our, our area of the world a little bit of a better place? So I, I see both sides. I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm a lot of bit torn. Um, and I I don't know. I would be think on this?
No, today's the last day.
Today's it.
Unfortunately, today's the last day to hear all real estate appeals exemptions and I was waiting on information from my solicitor and then get it till yesterday and everything. So that's why it's on the agenda so late.
So we can't be like a judge and
No, yeah, if I did this last week, you could have tabled it and everything and we could have heard it this week, but
I agree.
Brooke, what is your main reason for your opposition?
I'm sorry, what?
What's the main reason for, for your thinking, your opposition of it?
I just think with the new House, House Bill, that this is so new that I just feel it should go to court and let the courts decide. Um, the counties I have spoken to that are on list serve, about eight or ten of them have denied them. Dolphin County has one in court. Diflin County, they said that, um, their Masonic Lodge withdrew, withdrew their application. It, it's just so new. This law is just so new. You know, I, you know, I come up here and I present the information to you and give you recommendations, but it's your choice what you want to do.
I, I thank you for doing the due diligence and checking around that. We appreciate that.
Thank you. So, uh, what, what is our solicitors? Oh, is this, is this gonna get challenged?
I think he's looking at you.
Yes, ours, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think Wiley, attorney Wiley would have looked at that, like.
About what?
When.
I spoke to Mike Wiley and he feels my recommendation to deny it is what I should do. He agreed on that when I said that to him and everything and he looked into it.
What we're hearing is, is the concern is, is what the factors are gonna be to meet those five, that five factor test is.
Yes.
What is going to be the burden of proof then? Uh, a lot of solicitors are, are going with the idea that you as commissioners shouldn't be the ones making that new law and setting those standards. You should wait for the courts to establish what those look like. And then rule on the, on those.
If we deny and the courts rule, we're, we're expecting the courts to rule in twenty twenty five at some point? I mean, this
Well, it just depends on the speed that it goes through the
Yeah, so I mean, it would be just like any other assessment appeal, which is, is they would appeal to the Court of Common Pleas, that we would have to present a case before the Court of Common Pleas and they would make their decisions. Uh, they're being appealed process further if they wanted to. But at least courts would be making the initial determination on, on what the relevant factors are, rather than just, um, vague and ambiguous, uh, five factors that are placed by the statute itself. Uh, there's very little explanation on what those mean relative to these types of organizations.
There is, that, that's the concern right there.
There, there's very, very clear established case law for other types of organizations. There's nothing that establishes what that factor test looks like right now.
So the organizations will have the opportunity to still challenge it and then it'll go to the court and that's what
Yes.
You, you guys as arsonists are
They're where they're gonna get a decision order and if you deny it, they have thirty days to file with the
This would be more than blanket.
Mm-hmm.
We're taking it away from all lodges.
Right. Absolutely.
Dave, could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, you can come back, you can come back to
Because the air, the air is a lot of bird to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh,
So, um, procedurally, if the board granted this, or it could not also appeal to court, is that true of alls?
I think the taxing authority
The taxing authorities can appeal.
Cause I happen to know the
The county, the county wouldn't appeal.
Or, yeah.
Correct.
But the school districts, the
School districts, the town districts, correct.
Obviously.
As was said and as we all know, I believe that we can appeal, which we would, we would pursue it. I mean, you know, we all and it is a case of new impression and burden tied to it, so. So I guess either way, um, could go to, you know, I don't know. Has the school district been heard from? The school district, well, it'd be Williamsport here of Muncie. They haven't weighed in yet.
Yeah.
I recall in Harrisburg that the school district is jecter down there. Harrisburg. All right, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to appeal or approve or deny following real estate exemption as outlined, dash, C?
You can do it one of two ways. If Brooke has it on there as an agenda, approve or deny. So whoever makes the motion, you can do it structured either one a way, one of two ways. Or you can make a motion to approve it for the second and then vote yea or nay. A yea vote would prove it and nay vote would deny it. I mean, this is we obvi- we need more organizations like this, not less. Um, you know, we need places like this that help our, our residents, especially our, you know, our residents that need help. Um, but you know, I'm, I'm not an attorney. I, I don't gosh.
I agree with the Commissioner. I, I, I want to thank both organizations because you do do uh, a lot of good services in the community. And we want to thank you for your work, no matter the outcome of the vote. I want to thank, and there are organizations across our county, we're very blessed with organizations throughout our county that take care of, of, uh, the needy and people that are underprivileged and, uh, people have fallen on hard times. And so, uh, this is one example of, of those individuals that bleed with their heart. And so, uh, we want to thank you first of all, before we make a decision. I mean, I, I don't know if it's proper to discuss or after there's a motion, but still have, still have a way out if, if we were to say no based upon the recommendations of our solicitor and our, uh, director of assessment. So we're not stopping it. We're just not making a blanket and, and like, um, having
Correct. Um,
Mr. God, can you add one more thing?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So.
Come back up to the police podium. Thank you.
I, I think one of the, one of the biggest things that, that weighs on this is relieving the government of its burden for one. And two, that we're an institution of pure public charity. It's like you said, it, it matters on the how do, how do the funds get distributed? Do we pay them to you and you distribute them or do we distribute them? If we distribute them, we're relieving you of your burden. And we are setting a precedence, but I think we're setting a fantastic precedence for an institution of public charity in the sense of which we work. The main reason I'm involved with the Masons is because of what we give back to the community. And that's what I offer you. Is, is, and I appreciate your comments about the organization. In, in the past ten, tw- in the past twelve years, we've had a thirty-three percent loss of membership. Those men that are still there in that organization, every single one of them is dedicated to being that public charity person being involved in a community. And I, I would just like to stress that and the fact that we would like to relieve you of some of your burden in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke, do you know at, at these assessed values what the dollar amount is will cost the county?
You're running at about twenty six hundred to twenty seven hundred for the county taxes for each parcel because the assessment's like at four hundred thousand.
Six grand a year.
Yes. And that's just the county portion. And I'm, sorry, I understand what they're both saying that they give to the community and everything, but this is the new law and I can't stress that enough is I feel more comfortable letting the courts decide due to this being a new law and everything. That's, but this is up to you as the Commissioners on how you want to vote. Did you want to say something else, Dave?
I have something.
So I was reminded that, um, many organizations, and I'm, I'm a board member of another one that is clearly a five oh one C three. Our hospitality fund is a five oh one C three, but ain't organizations, so. Many organizations that are clearly exempt do nevertheless make payments in lieu of taxes, cover, um, the services that the government provides, but is more, the payments would be more in line of what the organization's good. Well, that's one other option to ask for that type of thing and come to an agreement with organizations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, I think the biggest concern unfortunately, because it is such a new law, is it's difficult to roll back the decision. Make a decision that's inconsistent with, with what the courts ultimately determine are are the, the right factors to be considered. Uh, once you approve them, you can't, can't remove them from that party. That, that's probably one of the primary concerns that are driving this, uh, is because it's such a case of first impression on, on what those factors look like. The courts make that determination first so that way and actually make intelligent decisions and knowledgeable decision without having to roll back or create precedent. All right, I, I will say this. I hope it, when it goes to court, I hope you guys win. Um, this will be the worst vote I've made so far, but I, or motion I've made so far, but I will make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? Um, you know, I think in agreement with the solicitor, not, you know, I mean, I think it's uh, some, maybe somewhat unfair to the to the, uh, organizations, but I, I would second that. And I'll make the comment, I, I, I agree with maybe a, a bit premature without a decision from the courts. Uh, I recognize that the outstanding work that organizations do. Um, but I do believe this is something that, that the courts should probably decide before we make a call on it. So all in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye? Deny three.
Uh, sorry.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Brooke.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
At this time, we'll adjourn the Board of Re- Assessments Revisions. We convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting for Commissioners' comments.
I would, uh, the only comment I'll, I'll make is, you know, we're, we're in the middle of a budget season. Um, and I know that, uh, the taxpayers of Likecoming County have, have entrusted us in not only the, the money being brought in, but only being spent and, uh, I just wanted, for the record, that it's, it's been a, it's been an amazing process. This is Mark and I's first time going through it. Uh, we've had great help with our, uh, financial team streamlining the process. Uh, there's still work to be done. You know, we're, we, uh, we're pretty adamant that we want to get to a balanced budget for the first time in decades. Uh, because the, the, the funds that were supporting an unbalanced budget are gone. Yeah, we just can't continue that way. So we are aggressively looking at a lot of cuts. We're aggressively looking at streamlining, uh, you know, our RMS today was was, you know, a realignment of fees, but also a, a realignment of the organization itself and making, uh, some cuts to make it better. I mean, in, in reality, you know, you hate to, I don't know if those two words go together very well, cuts and making it better. But that's really what we're trying to do. We gotta make things better within the county. Uh, we are working aggressively at it. We ask, uh, I know a lot of the employees watch this meeting. We ask them to understand that it, it's a serious situation and we are seriously looking at cost savings. Um, because there's only two ways, cut costs and raise taxes. Uh, they may both have to happen, uh, but if we can limit the, the Uh, but if we can limit the, the, the increase in taxes. Because we have also done what taxpayers have asked all three of us to do as we came into office, as we ran for office. Cut expenditures. So I, I want everybody to be well aware. We are, we are truly doing that as a group.
Thank you. I added that this is my fifth budget by far. This is by far the most difficult budget I've been involved in. Um, as, as emphasized by the commissioner. The, the excessive funds are gone. Uh, things continue to rise in cost. Our energy costs alone are going up 40%. And, uh, there's, there's so many different factors, inflation that have driven up the cost, price of goods. Everything has gone up. So the last time taxes were raised was 2017. You know, which is going on eight years. Um, we continue to look at this budget. You know, at one point last year, we were 31 million in the hole. We were able to get that down to 14 million. Uh, prior to the budget, we're trying to drive it back down to where we can get a balanced budget. Uh, we have big. Uh, capital projects that have, uh, not been done over the years. Uh, that are, that are necessary. We have to, we have to finish. Many of those capital projects that are, that have been listed. For the years, we talked about the coroner's building and we've talked about. Uh, district justice buildings, things that just, for one reason or another have not been completed. And, uh, and, and now they are, are in the process of, of being worked on and completed, but. Uh, you have to live within a budget. And one of those two ways is either you cut costs or you raise taxes. Continue to look at all our options. But we want to emphasize to everybody in the county, employees and the taxpayers. That these are not good times. We have to emphasize. We have to make sure that every dollar is spent wisely. We're going to continue to look at streamlining many things. And it might not be to the. May not be to the. Please, you know, certain department heads are elected officials. But we have to understand that, uh, we have to live within our means. And so if we have to cut certain things. We might have to do so. We'll, we'll, we'll look at this budget. Uh, we've trimmed a lot of the fat out. We're going to continue to do so. But again. We're going to do our best to do our due diligence.
I just want to say. I echo everything they said about the budget. Um, tonight is Halloween, obviously, as we all know. It's, it's for kids, uh, it, it's the most festive day of the year in a lot of ways, certain ways. It's all, it's also the most dangerous day of the year. More kids are hit by cars on Halloween than any other day by a long shot. If you are, obviously, if you have your kids and it's, you know, corralling them and making sure it's important. Um, but also to the, to drivers, to anyone who's out and about, I have an 18-year-old. Who I'm sure is going to be out. It's going to be a warm night. It's going to be populated and it's going to be dark. Eventually, and, um. Just be careful. Don't drive through populated areas. Don't go anywhere you don't need to go. Um, and be hyper alert. Because there's going to be some little witch who's dressed all in black, who's excited to get to the next house who's running across the road. So it is, uh. I never realized it until I saw the statistics how dangerous it is. But for the drivers, if anyone, don't go if you don't need to. And stay, there's all these, you know, in Torshville, Arch Street and Montour Street are, it's like a parade. You know, stay away from the busy areas. You know where they are. Just be uber, uber careful. Because it is a dangerous, dangerous night. So about that. Um, also, obviously, next week at this time, we will be sitting here and we will be post-election. Um, I, I was watching the World Series with my mother last night and I said, hey, a week from now, we won't see any more of these ads. And, uh, is when you watch, if you sit down and watch an extended amount of. You know, and I know we're Pennsylvania and it's certainly, we are a swing state. We are, but you watch between Casey and McCormick and Kamala and Trump. You watch TV for two hours and you realize they're apparently the four worst people in America. You know, we are, I am anxious for it to be done. Um, and I, I just hope, I know next Wednesday when we come back to work and next Thursday when we're sitting here. Um, we are going to here keep grinding it out together, trying to make this county better and trying to figure things out. And I hope, I know 50% of the country is going to be thrilled and 50% of the country is going to be disappointed. And, um. We are going to do our part to, to keep driving forward and we hope that friendships aren't lost and productivity does not drop. And that, you know, America is still America and four years from now, we'll be doing this again. So, um. But for those of you who are happy that it's going to be over, we are happy too. And, but we just need to get through it and beyond it and to, um, to, to see how we work forward. But the three of us in our bipartisan little group, we are going to work forward, um, just as we have leading up to it.
Just want to go back to the budget. I want to emphasize. That the department heads, elected officials have helped with the budget. They, they've cut many areas. Uh, so they have worked with us. And I want to, I want to compliment them for doing so. And, and there's no particular, you know. Project is driving the causes. It's many, many factors, you know. We, we've known, I mentioned the coroner's building. That's been needed for years. These are things that are needed. That, that we have to have completed. Um, so as, as projects come to. Uh, we'll, we'll continue to tackle those projects and, and creative ways. And ways that we can make sure those elected officials, departments can do their jobs. But also at the same time. Access the tax dollars the best possible ways, most efficient ways. Anything else, gentlemen? Public comment. Anybody from the audience? Chris? Good to see you. Chris, could you say, state your name for the record? Okay.
Those two didn't stay here. But maybe you can ask that. I can just speak about Montsy Lodge. I really. On top of me with that. Of charity services that have brought to us a visit today. Right. It's like, it's crazy. And I found out that they did charity services. Maybe they did not talk to someone. But I really need to do that if they want to continue. But it's not. I have a, it's exemption for the charity services. I can't believe that they can do so. I hope my life, I have not. Oh, they do charity services. But that's one thing, yeah, I think it's a part of the campaign. It's also looking at that. It's group wise. Yeah, I know some of the nonprofit agents. Be, they all tax exempt. But they are not doing much charity services. And I don't know if you. Who did, were, observation. Support the country. Maybe you need to be monitored. But it's, it's great for those nonprofits. They're being there to work and services to me. I mean, those need to be recognized. I don't want to be also looking at that, but that was my thought. I guess I, I'm glad to hear. Very important and assuredly. And guys, I want to say that.
Thank you. Yes.
I didn't intentionally pose a speech.
Can you?
Uh, Jeff Strong, a Montgomery County resident.
Yes.
Would echo Commissioner Mercedes' comments on the, what's going to be a very historical. Question. I know that I've been involved in politics for a long time. Seem to be a very divided, divided nation right now. And I want to say that. Great leaders move mountains. They change guidelines and they lead people. We're in a leadership position in our, our community. And I think regardless of the outcome of this election. Theme of all of our leaders. All politics are local, I believe. My heart, I believe our constitution and our system was designed that way. It starts at the bottom. It works out, doesn't work at the top down. So I, I believe we're going to have a tremendous burden going forward. Showing your leadership by supporting humanity. After this election, we're very damaged. A lot of people are very concerned and I think. Voting numbers are going to reflect that we are. Very, uh, conservative country. So, and I appreciate everything you all do.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else? Andy online?
I do. Uh, I'll stick to the comments that pertain to county business. Truth Seeker, is your hiring freeze so not to waste? You know, banking on project 2025 is filling positions. But your health center was saving so much money. Truth Seeker again. Words like waste. Related to future employees, big volumes. How you feel on current and previous plays? One individual who has had several comments, but it's all in Spanish. So, um, un poquito habla España. Scottish Rite Masons are very different from other old wine Masonic lodges. But their ties to the unified Mason organization worldwide pauses pause. Lastly. Truth Seeker. Previous comment, project 2025. Referencing chapter three where we. Where you would mirror federal. MG. Did not hear a comment from audience member. We did not come up to the podium. Lastly, Truth Seeker. Horrible mic for public unable to get the podium would be appropriate. So their voice could be heard. You have mics out there. At the point in the adjustment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've completed our agenda. So our meeting adjourned. We'll meet again on November 7th. 2024 here at this meeting room. Thank you.
Thank you.